Scott?
Here.
Waters? Moore?
Here.
O'Kane?
Here.
Shaner?
Here.
Can we stand for a moment a silent prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Brace, parent. Say a few words, okay? Proclamation that reads, whereas the community now faces extraordinary challenges such as global health issues, food and water shortages, and economic struggles, and whereas all people regardless of race, gender, income, or geography have a moral right to a healthy, sustainable environment with economic growth, and where it is understood that the citizens of the global community must step forward and take action to create a green economy to combat the aforementioned global challenges. Whereas a green economy can be achieved on the individual level through educational efforts, public policy, and consumer activism campaigns, whereas it is necessary to broaden the diversity of global movement to achieve maximum success, now therefore I Robert E. Scott, Mayor of the City of Sioux City, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council to hereby proclaim April 15, 2024, as their day and urge our citizens to support green economy initiatives in Sioux City and to encourage others to undertake similar actions. If I could present this to you and say a few words if you would.
I would like to thank the city for this. We, as the board, could not thank everyone here enough and the council for their continuing efforts of helping Sioux City be cleaner, helping Sioux City grow, and just help us be a green city all around. I would also like to let everyone know that we do have the re-event coming up on April 27th and then a litter pickup on April 20th if anyone feels encouraged through Earth Day and Earth Month to come help us out with cleaning up our city and continuing our efforts.
Thank you. Item 2 through 12B constituted consent agenda, item fashioned unanimously unless a separate roll call votes requested by a council member. Anybody wishing to speak on an agenda item may come to the podium at the time the item is being addressed. Anybody wishing to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so at the end of the regular meeting under citizen concerns. You can fill out a card and give it to the city manager or just come forward. All speakers shall state their name and address for the record and then provide the statement, remembering that we're limited to three minutes per person. I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
Two is a reading of April 8 City Council minutes. Three is a motion acknowledging the March 26 Board of Adjustment actions. Four is a resolution accepting the work of Vanderpool Escavating for the South Fairmont Street reconstruction project. Five is a resolution adopting plans and specs for the Lewis and Clark Park joint sealant project. Six is a resolution fixing the amount to be assessed against private property, adopting and living a schedule of assessments for the sidewalks, no removal program. Seven are actions relating to grants and donations. A is a resolution approving a transportation alternative program funding agreement with Simcoe Metropolitan Planning Organization for the Christie Road to Glen Allen Road Trail Project Phase 1. B is a resolution approving a transportation alternatives program funding agreement with Simcoe Metropolitan Organization for the Christie Road Program for the — I'm sorry, for the Christie Road to Glen Allen Road Trail Project Phase 2. Three is a resolution authorizing transit to accept a CRP programming agreement from Simcoe Metropolitan Planning Organization Carbon Reduction Program for the Transit Maintenance Project Electrification Project. D is a resolution accepting donations received from the January through March. Eight are actions relating to street closures. A is a resolution temporarily closing various streets in the downtown area June 22 for the June Jam Outdoor Concert Event. B is a resolution temporarily closing various streets in the downtown area on June 1 for the Pride Festival. C is a resolution temporarily closing various streets in the downtown area June 22 for Art Affair. D is a resolution temporarily closing a portion of West 7th on May 25 for the Suland Asian Fest. E is a resolution temporarily closing various streets in the downtown area June 22 and 26 for the Battery Park Concert Series. Eight or nine are actions relating to agreements and contracts. A is a resolution approving an amendment to the Consulting Services Agreement with Veemster and Kim for the annual bridge inspection project. B is a resolution approving a post-construction stormwater management plan maintenance agreement and easement with all power for detention basin and accepting a permanent easement. C is a resolution approving a post-construction stormwater management plan and maintenance agreement and easement with Inglusia Christiana Pablo DeVita Church for detention basin and accepting a permanent easement. D is a resolution approving an assignment, assumption, and amendment agreement between Washington Trust Bank, Alta Trust Bank, and the city for the health reimbursement arrangement plan with Gallagher Benefit Services. E is a resolution approving a contract to RP Constructors for the Convention Center Men's Restroom Waste Vent Piping Replacement. F is a resolution approving a contract to Barclay Asphalt for the city's facility asphalt overlay project. G is a resolution approving an amendment to the Consulting Services Agreement with JEO Consulting for the undersized water main replacement project. H is a resolution terminating the development agreement with Lamb Arts and approving a deed in lieu of foreclosure. I is a resolution approving Appendix 2 to the memorandum of agreement with the Iowa Department of Public Defense for the Runway 1331 and 185th Apron Reconstruction Project at the airport. G is a resolution approving a military construction cooperative agreement with the National Guard Bureau for Services in connection with the Runway 1331 and 185th Apron Reconstruction Project. Colonel, you want to come up and tell us what this project's all about?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Sonia Morrison, the wing commander of the 185th. And overall, as we've kind of discussed in the past, it's a reconstruction project to the runway based upon the transition we made over 20 years ago for a runway that was not large enough, or deep enough, or wide enough for the KC-135 or for the future aircraft that the Air Force will be flying. So this is really a three to four-year project that we've worked in for the installation development plan along with the city manager and the airport and really many business leaders. This will be the start of the final planning phase, which will allow us to move into the full construction phase, ideally in '26 and '27. So this will get us to the 100% by next spring for the final planning stages of this runway. So it's a significant project. Really, more than anything, I want to say thank you to the entire city, to the community, the amount of support that we've received to help make sure that we are going to be in a position for the next 50 years to remain in this community is very helpful. So we appreciate all the support and that's what this project is about.
So we are close to getting it fully approved?
Yes, sir. We are close.
It took a woman after all those men commanders. It finally took a woman to get it done.
You're gonna bring it home.
I'm gonna remind all—
Right time, right place, sir.
I'm gonna remind all those guys that when I see them. Good job. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Where was I? K? K is a resolution approving a work order with RS and H Iowa for the Runway 1331 and 185th Apron Reconstruction Project. L is a resolution approving an amendment to the Prime Services Agreement with Passio Technologies for an addition of an electronic passenger counting system and mobile fare system for transit. Tanner actions authorizing payments. A is a resolution approving funds transfers for March. B is a motion approving claims, expenses, and receipts for March. Purchasing. A is a resolution approving a renewal option to backstrap for Rock Salt. B is a resolution amending the purchase order with Andritz separation for off-site repair of D5L centrifuge at the wastewater treatment plant. C is a resolution approving a renewal option to Knife River Midwest as a primary vendor for the purchase of hot mix asphalt. D is a resolution approving a renewal option to Barclay Asphalt as a secondary vendor for the purchase of hot mix asphalt. E1 is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Lincoln Christiason for a pump and motor for well number 10. E2 is a resolution awarding a purchase agreement to Lane Christiason for the installation of a pump and motor for well 10. Twelve are boards and commission and committee minutes. That concludes the consent agenda.
Mayor, before I vote, I need to abstain on item 8E on battery park closure of certain streets.
Passes five to zero, or four to zero, Mr. Waters. The abstract recommendations of planning and zoning. Thirteenth resolution approving the final plat of the North Hoover Valley First Edition and the petitioners, the city of Sioux City, P&amp;Z recommends approval. I'll move that.
Second.
Mayor and council, Brent Nelson, Senior Planner. This item was—the Planning Commission recommended this item be approved by a vote of six-zero.
Thank you. Passes four to zero. Hearing in order—14th hearing and ordinance rezoning 3820 Highway 75 North. The petitioner is the city of Sioux City. P&amp;Z recommends approval. I'll move it.
Second.
Public hearing is now open. Anyone to be heard?
The Planning Commission also recommended this be approved by a vote of six-zero.
What's the—I'm gonna go ahead. Anybody to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed? Passes four to zero. Anybody opposed to waiving the statutory rule?
No.
I'll move that.
Second.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye. I'll move second and third.
Second.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Fifteenth is a hearing and ordinance vacating the property at 108 Ruston Street. The petitioner is Brooke Colazo. P&amp;Z recommends approval. I'll move that.
Second.
Public hearing is now open.
Wade Schultz Planner. This was some right-of-way that was bought a really long time ago when the railroad still ran through there. That was for city purposes. This is just vacating that, so.
Building a new house? Is this place where they build a new house?
They built a new house next to it. This would be the spot in between.
Hearing is open. Anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes four-zero. Anybody opposed to waiving the statutory rule?
No.
I'll move it.
Second.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
I'll move second and third.
Second.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Sixteen is a hearing and ordinance vacating various right-of-way adjacent to 1825 South Oleander Street. The petitioner is Richard Hodges, city of Sioux City. Planning and zoning recommends approval. I'll move that.
Second.
Hearing is now open.
This is some old railroad depot right-of-way, kind of tucked back behind Menards and so forth, and this is nice and flat. The petitioner is looking to add it to his yard, so he's here in the audience if you have any other questions.
Hearing is open. Anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Sorry. Passes four-zero. Anybody opposed to waiving the statutory rule?
No.
Move it.
Second.
Scott?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
I'll move second and third.
Second.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye. Seventeen is a hearing and ordinance rezoning 3230 Stone Park Boulevard. The petitioner is Beechbun. P&amp;Z recommends denial. I'll move it.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, the Planning Commission recommended that this item not be approved. The vote was four opposed, one in favor, and one abstention.
What was the reasoning?
The zoning allows too many uses that could be counterproductive in that neighborhood, such as bars, used car lots, that wouldn't be appropriate for the neighborhood.
And this use is for a coffee shop?
Well, that's what he's proposing, but you never—once the zoning is in place, it's in place.
Well, wait, the limited—it is that—is a coffee shop not allowed in the zone that it is now?
No, it is not.
Is this where I think it is?
This is used to be old Step and Time.
Yeah.
Step and Time.
What better place than that for a coffee shop?
Well, I don't know that we—there was a problem with the coffee shop. The problem is if the coffee shop goes away—
But we can limit by—we can limit use by a PD, right?
You could.
I mean, what do you tell me it's gonna be? What would you love to see there?
Um, well—
I don't understand how you could have—not have a coffee shop, but you could have a floral shop.
The floral shop is illegal nonconformant use.
That's what I'm saying. So once it sits for a year, they can't even put a floral shop back in there. So what can then you do with it? I guess that's my question.
There are a number of uses that are allowed in the district that would seem reasonable.
What would that be? I'm just curious—I don't know your zoning ordinance, especially after you guys have changed them so much. I'm just curious what is allowed under the existing ordinance. I don't know—I'm not being argumentative. I just would like to know.
That district would allow such uses as—what are the allowed uses in the BG—GC after—other than we have? What do you mean?
Because if it sits empty for a year, it can't even be a flower shop anymore, right? And it's—how long is it sitting empty now? Four months?
It'd be getting close.
Huh?
It's been a while.
Yeah, it was first of the year.
The point is, the Planning Committee looked at the uses that could go in there, such as a bar or a—
Right.
I—I don't want a bar. I don't want a used car lot. I'm not offended by a floral shop. I wouldn't be offended by a coffee shop. I wouldn't want a fast food place. So I guess, how can you accomplish what the petitioner wants and still do what you're concerned about?
You can do a conditional zoning, whereas where—and if you do that, we'd prefer it be deferred and sent back staffs when you work with it. But can you do a conditional zoning by where you limit the number of uses allowed there? The owner has to sign an agreement.
Right.
Right.
The only concern that I would have if it were—if we didn't okay a coffee shop going in would be the traffic, and I know that that is—in relation to the next item on the agenda, which is the alley abatement right next to it. Because if they were gonna—if they were gonna do a drive-through coffee shop—
Okay.
Part of this is they were also requesting the alley. Is that correct?
Correct.
So my question really is pertaining to 18. The purpose for easements is what I read into it in the homework, essentially. There's electrical lines and there's—there's lines and things like that underneath the alleyway so that it couldn't be given to them. Is that correct?
That right-of-way is rather full of various utilities. You have a 18-inch storm sewer, a large water main, large sanitary sewer. Mid-American has utilities in there as well.
But they have utilities all over town in an alley. You can pave it. You just have to give them access if something goes bad.
Well, this is a request from engineering not to vacate it due to the number of utilities in there.
What about an easement so that they can use the surface?
Well, in order to meet the code, they need paved or hard-surface access. Asphalt paving. Turning up an asphalt or paved driveway to service those uses can be problematical.
I'd like to bring this back. I don't want to vote on this until we've looked at other avenues for this.
I agree, and I feel like there could be some middle ground, too. Like, rather than necessarily paving the entire thing, they might be open to meeting us halfway so that we could still allow for an easement, possibly?
How'd you vote on this?
I wasn't at this meeting, that's why. These guys are presenting, but I will tell you, as the board usually votes, this isn't about the coffee shop, you know? This is about what it could be in the future, so that's why they turned it down.
But we've limited uses in the past by PD or whatever you wanted, conditional uses. We've limited all that. Now, the council is gonna come up and tell me how wrong I am, which I'm not gonna buy today, so—but go ahead with your story. I'm dying to hear your side of this.
Stephen Pastoka, City Legal. A coffee house is legal there in the current zoning, which is SC, right?
No, he's saying it's not.
Not allowed.
He said the floral shop isn't even legal.
Oh, okay. The main issue was they wanted the drive-through, and you can't have—you need to be in GC to have a drive-through.
You what?
It needs to be in GC to have a drive-through. That's the—that's the main issue, so.
You can have a GC. Are you telling me you can't do that with a B.C., with a planned development? I don't think that's true.
You'd need to do the GC and then reduce the uses allowed in the—
Well, okay, then you do a GC with a PD, which limits the use.
And we need to have a signed agreement with the owner, so we need to—
I understand, but if we turn this down, can he come back next week and reapply?
Procedurally, I think you could delete the item, and the council could take no action on it. Or would you prefer it be remanded back?
It might be best to delete the item so we have as much time to work with as we—
Yes.
That's fine, but I don't want him to have to pay again either.
Well, we won't charge him an extra fat.
Okay.
I'll move—you delete 16 and 17 both.
Second. O'Kane?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Moore?
Seventeen and eighteen.
Seventeen and eighteen, yeah. I'm sorry, seventeen and eighteen. I correct. Who's seconded?
Second.
Okay.
Read that one more time?
Yeah.
Okay.
Be safe.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Nineteen is a hearing resolution approving a proposal to sell and authorizing a city deed. The petitioner is Raymer and Raymer Properties, the property adjacent to 901 and 911 Cornelia Street. I'll move that.
Second.
Public hearing is now open. Anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes four-zero. Twenty is a hearing and a resolution approving a proposal to sell property and authorizing a city deed. The petitioner is Raymer and Raymer Properties, property adjacent to 911 Cornelia Street. I'll move that.
Second.
Public hearing is now open. Anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes four to zero. Twenty-one is a hearing and resolution adopting the annual plan for the Section 8 Housing Choice Voucher Program. I'll move that.
Second.
Public hearing is now open. Anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes four to zero. Twenty-two is a hearing and resolution adopting the revisions of the administrative plan for the Section 8 Housing Choice Voucher Program. I'll move that.
Second.
Hearing is now open. Anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes five to zero. Item 23 is a hearing and resolution adopting the annual budget and the capital improvement program. I'll move that.
Second.
Hearing is now open. Anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes four-zero. Twenty-four is a resolution approving a statement of authorized personnel complement for the city departments. I'll move that.
Second.
Passes four to zero. Twenty-five is a resolution approving fund transfers for the fiscal year 2025 budget. I'll move that.
Second.
Passes four-zero. Twenty-six is a solid ordinance enforcement.
Bear with me here. Hello, council. My name is Era, as you know, and I'm with Environmental Services, and Julie had requested that I come up here for a short presentation of the litter ordinances. Basically, as a notification or reminder for residents and property owners, and to also notify our residents that these ordinances will be enforced per city code. In the past, letters were sent to notify of a violation, but citations were not being issued on a regular basis. Situations staffer seeing citywide are littering on private property in the right-of-ways and overflowing trash containers. These are commercial and residential issues. Staff and residents are also reporting that residential curbside containers are also staying curbside past the 24 hours that they are allowed to be street-side. City ordinances are listed on the next two slides. Basically, they are—littering is prohibited. Loose papers on premises are prohibited. Litter-covered receptacles are required. The keeping of solid waste materials and placement of solid waste containers all have ordinances associated with them. All of these codes correlate to the same thing. Trash is required to contain so it does not become a litter problem, and this includes all debris being placed into covered receptacles to prohibit blowing or scattering of the trash onto public and private property. The current city code states that the minimum fine for the litter infraction is $100, and it will contain a $95 court fee on top of that. If violations continue to occur, the penalty amount can increase with each citation. There's a few obstacles with the ordinance that I've noticed that inhibits the enforcement. One of the requirements is that it's being sent certified mail. While I understand the need to acquire a signature for documentation purposes, many letters are returned as unclaimed. Thus, we're wasting almost $9 per letter, and no notice is being issued at that point. Also, this process can take upwards of five to 10 days for issuing the letter and the shipping time. A way to remedy this is either alter the language to state a returned or unclaimed notice may be viewed as a valid notice and considered received, or allow the notice to be sent through regular mail. Another alternative is the use of a notice, something like what is shown here on the screen, to be completed and either handed to the property owner or affixed to the door or entryway of the establishment. This list, the violation committed, notifies the property owner that if the violation is not remedied, a citation will follow. It also defines a timeframe in which the violation should be corrected. If a citation should follow, it will— If a citation should follow, it will be accompanied by a letter that states what the infraction is. KPA Flex, which is the program that Ross has been using for safety issues, is being used to track what notices are issued, along with a photo of the violation. One notice per code violation will be issued. After that notice, a citation will follow for any other violations of the same code per property address. The process would basically be a violation is identified by staff or reported to staff by a caller. Staff will visit the site, take a photo of the property and the violation if there is in fact one. And notice would be provided, sorry, at the time to the property owner, and if one is not available, notice will be affixed to the door of the establishment. A site recheck will be conducted to verify violation has been corrected. If it's not, a citation will be issued, either in person or through the mail. Staff are hoping that streamlining the process will assist enforcement of the codes while limiting the amount of litter and trash that is allowed to deface both public and private properties. And then if there's any questions, try to make it short and sweet for you. I know it's going to be a long night.
I have, I do have a couple. On the certified mail, what I've seen done sometimes is certified mail goes out, and if it's unclaimed, doesn't matter if it's unclaimed or not, the fact that it's been sent certified, I think that triggers your ability to do the enforcement. City attorney can correct me if that's wrong. But in addition to the certified mail, send regular mail, a copy of which you're sending certified, because that typically will be opened. But I think just, the law doesn't require that they actually send the receipt back that they received it, does it? And that's why you send it certified, because you know at least it's been.
Or documentation, because they sign for it.
Been delivered.
But we're having a lot of issues where they either reject it, or it goes unclaimed.
I know, but I think that's good, that's good enough for and for purposes.
Send it certified.
Yeah. But if you send a regular copy with it, just for another stamp, you know, oftentimes those get opened.
Correct, and we do that.
But how many do you have?
A lot. I probably get, on a given day, three complaints a day that we go out and look at or send a letter to. And that's every day. I had, one day we had seventeen that went out, and fifteen of them got returned.
Well, they're going to the, excuse me, they're going to the proper address, they're just not being, they're just not being picked up at the post.
Correct, or they won't sign for them at the door.
Or they won't sign for them, yeah.
But Dan, what you're saying is the fact that it's sent certified is we've fulfilled our obligation legally?
Correct, it just has to be sent. It doesn't have to be claimed or.
That's great, we have that. That's good to know. And this is not an effort by any means to give fines.
No, and we won't be.
Clean up the city to help with this littering.
And we won't be driving around looking for people and violations. It would be if I'm out on an inspection and I see.
So what if the garbage man goes out and mides way over the top, and he sees that, does he report that to you? That I didn't comply?
No, it's not so much for residential, because those people aren't usually rolling those out more than 24 hours in advance if they are following our ordinance. It's more for like our downtown, or I'm sorry, the commercial dumpsters, when they start piling them up, and then the lids don't close. Most residential, the lid is somewhat closed on them, so it limits some of that blowing out. Plus, it's bagged garbage, where a lot of the dumpsters, sometimes they're not bagged.
But they are included in the ordinance.
It is included. It's supposed to have the lid shut.
They should put.
But we're not going to go out and measure residential dumpster.
No, we're not going to go look for it, but they should, as a good practice, have them closed. They should wheel them in 24 hours after pickup. I mean, just keep our city clean and neat.
I'm all for it. I just.
Yep, yeah.
And if it was a situation where it's the same house that maybe it's not closing, then we usually notify them and ask if they would like a second container or an additional container.
It's Earth Month, so we.
It's Earth Month, trying to cut down.
I agree, but, I mean, the two lawyers say just the letter's good enough, send the letter and start. I don't, what else do?
It's mostly a way to let the citizens know that the ordinance is going to start being enforced.
Right.
And like I said, it's not that we're going out policing it, but when we see instances, or when we get calls that it's the same neighbor leaving a container out, or the same neighbor that has litter coming into their lawn, that's when we'll go out and we'll do some enforcement on that.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know many citizens are here to talk today, and I want to read this statement before we open it up to citizens. City of Sioux City, along with the city council and the staff, are dedicated to fostering diversity and equity in our community. We're committed to creating more opportunities for inclusivity within our organization and the community. We support the efforts of the inclusive Sioux City Advisory Committee and seek their guidance in steering our inclusive efforts in a positive direction. At this, as this issue currently before us is a personnel matter, it will not be discussed publicly. That, that doesn't mean citizens can't speak, it's just that the council is unable to respond. So, any citizens that would like to speak, please come forward at this time.
Hi, Jessica Hammond, 3301 Memorial Drive. I'm here to show support for SEM. This artwork I created is a representation of Sem Har and all the beautiful work she does in our community. She's educated, highly qualified, and recognized as a leader, not only locally but nationally. She's a resource for our community. She listens to people, she connects people with the resources they need, and she gives everybody a chance for their voices to be heard. She's created platforms and opportunities for people of all different backgrounds to talk about their struggles and find support. Thanks to SEM, I had the chance to participate in a panel discussion focused on women in business as part of the Difference is Dialogue series. Since her suspension, the Difference is Dialogue events have been postponed indefinitely. It's really sad to see such an amazing container for community conversations be canceled. If we want to grow together as a community, I think it's important to have a space for people to have these tough conversations. And really, if we want to work through any issues, we have to be able to talk about it, so we are here to talk about it today.
Hello, my name is Sarah Gill, and I have an address in Nebraska, 1447 Moody Road, Jackson, Nebraska. I do have a business here in Sioux City, Iowa. I am located on Fourth Street. I'm here to support SEM, because SEM has always supported me and my business and what I do. I center marginalized communities in my work. I'm a photographer, and I very much am for inclusivity and diversity. And I've lived in Sioux City my entire life. I am 38 years old. And my husband and I talk about moving from here all the time, from the area, because we want to go somewhere where there is more inclusivity. And when SEM came to the community, I thought, finally, Sioux City is finally going to maybe take some more steps in the right direction, and maybe I will stick around. And so, I really hope SEM can continue the work that she's been doing. She's given me a platform to use my voice, and so I want to use my voice here today to support her. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good afternoon. I am here this afternoon as a concerned citizen of Sioux City to speak.
Can I have your name and address, please?
Oh, sure. Yeah, my name's Dave Scott, and I live at 28 Congress Avenue.
Thank you.
Yeah. I'm here this afternoon to speak as a concerned citizen of Sioux City about Semahar Gebrekeaton. Given the coverage of her situation, I am here to speak about some of the positive things she has done to impact the community, and in particular, Morningside University. Semahar has provided connections around the community to professors at Morningside, participated in panel discussions, including being the school's Black History Month speaker, and she's connected with students on campus through internships and extracurricular activities. Thanks to her time and efforts, students now better understand how their voice matters in a campus environment, and they have an increased ability to understand different perspectives. Her knowledge and encouragement is vital to helping students grow, which is why I, along with other members of the community, urge the city to work quickly to bring her back and remain transparent about the process. Without people like Semahar who engage in new ideas, defy harmful boundaries, and uplift the community, Sioux City will remain stuck in time and unable to provide people with new edifying experiences. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Greg Gelcher, 4412 Cheyenne Boulevard. And I've been asked to speak on behalf of Semahar as well. I've gotten to know her primarily through two venues. Number one, her on-campus activities. I'm a professor of history at Morningside University, and she has made multiple visits to Morningside. And she has met with multiple and diverse campus groups. And her message has basically been to encourage young people to get more involved in the community, which obviously is a message that I think we, our youth need to hear more often. Another thing she has done repeatedly is explain her official job with the city of Sioux City and its duties. And she has therefore modeled for students that government should not just be the realm of or concern of our most mature members of the community, like myself. Secondly, I've gotten to know her more and more through the Sioux City Sister City Committee with Yamanashi. I'm a founder of that Sioux City Sister City Community, sorry, Sioux City-Yamanashi City Sister City Project. And my involvement with the committee predated the formal agreement signed over 20 years ago. However, early on, I had a bit of a run-in with a former city manager and largely dropped out of activities, other than the occasional translation service and working on the committee at Morningside that helped recruit, interview, and select teachers to go to Yamanashi City to represent Sioux City. My own son, Alex, was the previous English teacher representing Sioux City in Yamanashi City, and he did that for five years through June of last year. I accompanied with my wife and another Morningside professor, we took 15 students last May to Yamanashi City, where they toured the area and were the beneficiaries of a sister city experience, staying in the homes of Yamanashi City residents. Semahar heard about my wife and I, and contacted us, and asked for some help with the subsequent visit from Yamanashi City of the dignitaries who came in November, as you may recall. I want to emphasize simply that Semahar has always been a pleasure to work with. I found Semahar to be professional, organized, thoughtful, welcoming, and very enthusiastic about the Sister City project. It's because of Semahar, in fact, that the three of us, my wife, son, and me, all agreed to fill out applications for the Sister City Committee just prior to her suspension. I hope to be able to work with Semahar again in the future for the betterment of Sioux City.
I'm going to ask you to wrap up.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? We'll go to council concerns. Mr. O'Kane?
Before that, I just want to thank all of you for your remarks that spoke at the podium today. Thank you.
Two events happening this week, big ones that you should put on your calendar. The Newsies at West High School. It's going to be April 18th through 20th at 7:00 PM. They've been working on this for, for a long time. I have loaned quite a bit of paint to that department.
What is it?
The Newsies, the musical. Will be at West High. The 18th, 19th, and 20th. 7:00 PM is the showing. I would recommend it highly. These kids are really driven, and they've, they've put a lot of time and effort into preparing for it, practicing for it, but also painting the stage, and they always go above and beyond, so that's a good one.
What time is that?
That is at 7:00 PM on the 18th, 19th, and the 20th. And I, I think Mike would probably agree, the tickets sell out pretty quickly. He did three showings in a year, or three in a row last year, right? So, those, those kids are just amazing what they can accomplish, the acting skill and the voices that they have and their dedication. So, highly recommend that one.
How to say it?
This week also is opening night for the Friends of the Library Book Sale. And that is starting Thursday from 4:00 to 8:00. It's in the Old Chuck E. Cheese. For the opening night, there is a donation that's requested, and then after that, there's, there's no donation. That directly supports our library. Maintaining access to library books and to knowledge for our community is incredibly valuable. So, if you are looking for a book, I would strongly recommend you to go check that out. I always find at least a box full of gems, so strongly recommend that one as well. That's everything I've got for this week.
Julie?
I have several things to bring up. Earth Day is April 22nd, which is next Monday, but our community is trying to expand this to Earth Month. So, that's why we're bringing up the ordinance for how we contain our own litter. Litter is all of our problem. When you see a bag flying around, or a piece of something, or a plastic bottle, it was someone else's at that time, but now that you see it, it's yours. So, let's pick it up and let's throw it away. I'm always picking up. I'm always stopping. I've always got bags in my car, and if you don't want to, you know, get your hand dirty, bring a plastic, you know, grocery bag with you and turn it inside out and pick up a few things and, and throw it away. It takes a community to maintain a community. It really does. It's all of our trash. We have a lot of litter events coming up, so please watch social media. You'll see it on Sioux City Government page. Also coming up, and it's already started, lots and lots of construction projects are coming. So, although we want everything fixed up, we tend to kind of complain about the process. So, be tolerant. If you know there's construction going on your path, and it's going to cause a delay or a backup. Hamilton Boulevard was backed up both directions today because they're repairing that big island out there by Stone Park, or Graham, no, Stone Park Boulevard, yeah, by Meyer Funeral Home. That's in really bad repair. They're taking that out first as part of last year's project to finish that up. Go another route if you can, which I had to do to get to council on time today, and it was not a problem. We have a lot of events coming up. We're announcing them. We're giving permits for them. Lots of things to look forward to and be excited about this spring and this summer. Just today, we approved, you know, street closures and permits for June Jam and our upcoming Pride Festival, the Art Affair, Asian Fest. Saturday in the Park was recently approved. There's a whole summer full of events coming at the Tyson Event Centers, parking lot and inside, and battery park behind the Hard Rock. So, lots of things are happening. Embrace them. Show up. Spend money in your community, and let's do it happily. I know we want other businesses to come and develop our Sioux City, but if we don't love our city, they're not going to love it either. So, we've got to kind of remain positive as much as we can. Unity in the community. Youth for Unity is coming up on April 20th from 12:00 PM to 3:00 PM at the Boys and Girls Club at 823 Pearl Street. So, please plan on attending. That's on social media as well. You'll be able to find the information there. And I think that's all I have today.
All right. Mr. Moore?
Nothing further, Mayor.
Well, as long as you're announcing place for your school, my granddaughter will be starring in, I can't even say the play, Les Misérables, whatever.
Les Misérables, really?
Three and a half hours of crap it gets to go sit. You know, I'm quite a theater guy when I'm willing to do that. Anyway, she's a, she's in grade school, but it's mostly a high school play, so I'm going to brag on my granddaughter a little bit today.
That's not an easy musical. It really isn't.
I'm sure it'll be not easy to stay awake three hours either, but I'll do it for my granddaughter. I move, we adjourn.
Second.
Shaner.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
What'd you want to say?
O'Kane.
Aye.
When was that?